Talking about the comments on the radio that they heard about.
Oh, really? What'd they say?
What'd they say?
Was that person played by Sylvester Stallone?
Yeah, I think so.
Hey, um...
Oh, Dan. Good day.
Yeah.
They brought Bagron in, too? No.
I'll try to hear you.
Have your jacket on? Oh, okay. I thought you said...
Eevee? Who? Yeah.
If I had a pair of bright-toed shoes, I could wear them.
Spats. He's spats.
I, uh...
Oh, crap. I forgot my glasses.
Houndstooth is what they're called.
Oh, houndstooth.
Dude, those reading glasses. I need to spend some time with Kathleen.
That was super glue. It's super glue.
I've been going down, so I had to clarify where we fit in with that. Find out how that works, huh? I guess we don't have three inches of paper from yesterday.
So, Ashita's not here, right?
We can get his reading glasses. He'll be right back.
That's important. Got those glasses?
Got those glasses.
All right. It is nine o'clock. This is the time and place for the Tulare County Board and Board of Supervisors meeting. We're gonna start off this January 30th board meeting with a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led this morning by Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. We're actually gonna start off today with an item that is our addendum item, but since I'm the chairman, I've decided to take that up first. And this is a great honor, and I was actually gonna try to make this day be declared Luis Rambo Day in Tulare County, but apparently it's like National Pear Day or something, so it didn't quite work out. But so this addendum item that we are taking up number one, which you deserve your own agenda, Luis, so we're real glad that you had a whole separate agenda printed just for you. We're gonna present a proclamation to Luis Rambo honoring you for your many years of service to the community of Pixley. And I'm gonna present this proclamation. I'm gonna come down here and I'm gonna read this. You can stay seated until I'm done, and then I'd like you to join me in the well, and we'll take a few pictures, and then I'm gonna have you say a few words. So I give you a little advance notice. But I'm gonna present this to you right now, and then you can join me in a few minutes. Thank you. So this proclamation is presented to Luis Rambo honoring her for her many years of service to the community of Pixley. And her dedication and commitment to the community is warranting me reading this entire proclamation because we couldn't even fit all the words that describe all you did for that community, but what's here is a brief synopsis that'll give everyone an idea as to what you did do. Whereas Luis Rambo was born March 20th, 1920, on a purebred Jersey dairy to Luther and Alice Gilbert, she married Jack Rambo in 1948, and together they raised their two children, Eddie and Neil. Or Eddie? Edie. Edie and Neil. And whereas she graduated first honor student from Roach Avenue School in Porterville, valedictorian from Porterville High School, Porterville College, and cum laude from San Jose State University. And whereas Luis began her teaching career in Pixley after being hired by then Superintendent Melvin Rudholm in 1942, of that time only five years were spent as a sixth-grade teacher and at Cecil Avenue Elementary School in Delano. She finally left the classroom in 2006 after more than 43 years. And whereas Luis began her involvement in the community in 1942 when she joined the Pixley Women's Club. As co-chair, she worked on the restoration of the Artesian Well Monument in Pixley. She was also a member of the Pixley Town Council, Pixley, or I'm sorry, the Project Area Committee, the United Brethren Church, and frequently wrote articles for the Pixley Post, actually was the reason that that publication was published. And that publication covers the local life in Pixley. And whereas in 2000, April 25th, 2011, issue of the Tulare Advance Register, reporter Teresa Douglas wrote an article about Mrs. Rambo entitled "Woman Dubbed Unofficial Mayor of Pixley." In it, she praised Luis for her participation in the community, calling her "the go-to person in the small unincorporated Tulare County town." And whereas the United Way of Tulare County honored Luis on September 2nd, 2011, giving her the Advocate of the Year Award at their annual community breakfast. And whereas now, at the age of 93, after many years of service and dedication to the community of Pixley, Luis Rambo has shown residents what true volunteerism is all about. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Luis Rambo for her many years of service to the community of Pixley. Signed by Alan Ashita, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Luis, this proclamation is for you, so if you'd like to join me up here in the well, that would be fantastic. So this is for you, and we're gonna take a picture real quick. Here. All right. So this is for you, Luis, and may it be a small token of my thanks and the Board of Supervisors' thanks to you and people like you that make unincorporated communities be what they are in Tulare County. And you have shown residents what true pride and advocacy is about, and that one person can take a community and make that community what they want it to be. And through your dedication and efforts, Pixley has become a wonderful community, and you have many people who have been inspired by you and have made the decision to get involved and to make the community of Pixley a better place. And I consider you the starter log, so to speak, that the fire builds around. And you've done so much and really have inspired me to be the advocate that I can be for all unincorporated communities in the southwest part of the county. And I'm so lucky to have worked with you, and I thank you, and I wish you the best in your retirement, although I know retirement will never come for you officially, but it kind of has, so we took this time to recognize you. So thank you, Luis.
Well, thank you.
And here's the microphone if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, I'm only one of many volunteers that make Pixley what it is. And you can't stand alone. You have to join the crew, I guess. When I arrived in Pixley in 1942, I realized that it was a community of volunteers. So what do you do but just get in line and do what you can do with everybody else? And I think that Pixley is a good example of what happens to a community when volunteers work together. And I just, it was, I don't think I ever heard the word no. Now, that's unbelievable. Anyway, I accept this in the... as a dedication to what can happen when people work together.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
I really didn't expect to make a speech. But as usual.
Great job, Luis. Thank you. And thank you to all those from Pixley who journeyed up to Visalia to see Mrs. Rambo be honored. If all of you would please stand, I'd like you to all to be recognized for all your support and for also being volunteers, making a difference. So thank you. You have touched very, very many individuals who have all come today to, or some of which have come today to recognize you and to pay their tribute. So thank you very much, Luis. We sure appreciate all that you do. Next item that we will take up on our agenda, this is on the regular agenda, is item number one, a presentation given by Julie Baer, Regional Manager, regarding the Sierra Nevada Conservancy's Annual Report and an update on projects.
Well, first off, I'm not Julie Baer.
I can see.
Julie sends her regards to the board this morning. She was, she felt ill this morning, and she was gonna travel from Mariposa, and so I'm filling in for her. We were going to originally co-present. As you can see, my name, Bobby Kamanski, is on the PowerPoint there. But what I'd like to do this morning is just to do a little bit of an overview of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and some of the things we've been doing in Tulare County, Sierra portion of Tulare County. I looked at my old PowerPoint, and it was April of 2009, the last time I came and presented for you guys. And so for those of you not familiar with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, it's a kind of a unique state organization. We don't, we're not regulatory. We don't own any land. It's really focusing on the triple bottom line of the environmental, economic, and social well-being of the region. It goes all the way from the Oregon border down to the town of Tehachapi, about 500 feet in elevation on the west slope. So for Tulare County, that means that unfortunately Supervisor Ashita, who's not here today, he actually has sat on the Conservancy's board. And so we have a rotating group of local representatives who actually sit on the board and are the governing board for the organization. For me, it's an exciting opportunity to work locally and potentially have some regional impacts. Today, the reason why we decided to go ahead and have a presentation today was we released a report called the Proposition 84 Report. Prop 84 was a bond measure that was passed a number of years ago, and we're nearing the end of that investment period. And we wanted to just reach out to you guys and just show you what we've been able to do with some of the limited funds here in Tulare County. The last time, as I mentioned, I was here in 2009, and we only had a couple of projects we were able to get. In fact, one of the reasons why I started pestering the Conservancy myself was because Supervisor Ashita up in Three Rivers kept coming to Town Hall meetings saying, "There's some money out there that's not being spent, and, you know, it's really unfortunate that Tulare County can't do more." So what I did was I started picking up my notes and contacting people, and we've been able to be pretty successful. As you can see on the screen here, we have a number of different grantees alone in Tulare County. It's just a great success story. We only had a couple last time. Now we have at least 15 that we're working on with some active projects. And that's what I'm here to do today, is just to briefly go over a couple of these items. Some of the grantees range from nonprofits like Sea Set, Sequoia Natural History Association, to the Tule River Indian Reservation, and working on some of their emerging issues like marijuana garden cleanups. We've worked with the Tulare County Resource Conservation District on community wildfire protection plans, and I'll share with you a couple of exciting new projects that we have in the works as well. On the screen, you'll see just a couple of images from some of the cool projects that we have on the Tule River. Huge litter problem, graffiti problem. Well, we were able to help to facilitate a project that had a partnership between the Forest Service, Sea Set, and Wild Places up in Springville. So great partnership. They all fulfilled kind of their own unique role in that partnership, and we cleaned up a number of hundreds of graffiti sites on the rocks in the river. Thousands of pounds of trash were removed. And because that was just a temporary deal, what we wanted to do is make that long-lasting. So you can see up there on a receptacle that we have that's permanent along the Tule River, just above Springville. This has been enormously successful because we've been able to supplement that with some bilingual interpreters who go down and really educate folks about removing trash and cleaning things up. It's pretty exciting. It's had some long-term lasting impacts. Another really cool project that we have is Long Meadow Restoration. We did one other meadow restoration up at Big Meadows. Many of you maybe have recreated up near the Big Meadows area in Sequoia National Forest. That was a huge gully erosion, contributing sediment, removing wildlife habitat. We went in there and helped out, filled that back in. It's a wonderful meadow again today, retaining cold water for late-season irrigation, things like that, helping to slow runoff. Long Meadow Projects, really great example of taking a demonstration project and taking it to the next level. Long Meadow is one where we provided $75,000 to do the National Environmental Policy Act requirements and the California Environmental Policy Act requirements. As you know, sometimes those are obstacles in terms of funding, and what we wanted to do is remove that obstacle to this good project. Couple other things we had in the pipeline complete. I mentioned the Big Meadows Restoration Project down on your lower left. You can see the restored meadow and all of the wonderful water that it can retain for lower season runoff, slow floods, things like that, help improve water quality. Some of you may be familiar with or have visited Crystal Cave up in Sequoia National Park. They were running the entire cave facility on a generator. So what we did was, and that obviously has air quality impacts locally and regionally, what we did, and you can see their executive director, Mark Tilchin, we went up and helped him out, gave him about $200,000 to put in a solar panel that was in their parking lot. So instead of hearing a generator when you walk up to the cave, now it's very quiet, they have a light emitting diode LED system in their cave that also prevents algae from growing in the caves. We're able to protect the cave, protect air quality, and they have free energy that's coming from the sun, so they don't need to fill up their tanks in the generator every day. We have a really great project, one of my favorite of all time, Mountain Home State Forest Demonstration Project, where we've got, we funded a community wildfire protection plan for the eastern portion of Tulare County in partnership with Tulare County Resource Conservation District, and we were able to unite 17 fuel breaks in the eastern portion of the county with this one project. So we're working with Jim Crawl, who's the forester up there, and working with David Witt in the Tulare County Resource Conservation District. And we put together, this is a dream project where, you know, we have a small investment in taxpayer dollars, have this tremendous watershed benefit across the Tule River and even over into the Kern River drainage as well. So pretty exciting. That one's ongoing right now. We have a masticator on the ground, and it's controlling fuels out there so that they can do some other thinning and even potentially some prescribed fire operations. One of the things that's new that the Conservancy's been doing is trying to, I mentioned, really working on projects and trying to figure out where the gap is or where the stop is or where, how can we get in there and help remove some of these obstacles that might get in our way of doing good things that we know have these big watershed-level impacts? So we started a collaborative process whereby we're looking at all of the partners in each of these areas, small areas, say Sequoia National Forest, Sierra National Forest, or some of the small communities, figuring out what the roadblocks are to moving forward with some good projects or things that provide that triple bottom line. And so even though this is an emerging process in our area in Tulare County, the southern Sierra, what we've done is we sat down with Kevin Elliott, who's the new supervisor for Sequoia National Forest, and he was excited to see that we're interested in helping out, helping out, figuring out, hey, what are some issues that you're dealing with? How can we dedicate some time to figure out what's going on there? So we've got a couple of fuel break projects as well that stretch into Kern County, some that stretch into Fresno County and have impacts here in Tulare County. So we're hoping to make that a little bit more of a high-profile deal as we go forward. Seen some other areas that have had some successes. So also wanted to give you an update on the Sierra Nevada Geotourism Project, which is a really neat project where we have kind of a unique situation for each county, each area. We have a nomination process, National Geographic, Sierra Business Council, and Sierra Nevada Conservancy got together and said, hey, let's figure out how to create unique destinations in the Sierra. Let's figure out how to enhance those really great things that are unique to each area and promote them. So we have a website and a map guide that we've printed. So each local area gets to submit their own nominations for their own unique places, and that we're hoping to build a really creative and unique experience. So we have 126 nominations that are active in Tulare County alone. That website gets 60,000 visits a month. So it's a really great opportunity for folks who are looking for an authentic experience in Tulare County to go to this one place and have an opportunity to see that. Also, great Sierra River cleanup, region-wide in the Sierra. We've gotten together thousands of volunteers, and we have a Tule River cleanup scheduled this year in September. With this, our third year, we're gonna do it. So it's following up on the project with Sea Set and Wild Places and others, where we're actually trying to continue on those small investments of taxpayer dollars to make them last for many, many years to come. And then finally, just a little bit of an update on some future work. We are having, and I've been coordinating, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy itself is having a board meeting, its next board meeting, in Tulare County. And that's the second week. There's a board tour, and then there's a board meeting. It's up at Wuxachi Lodge, which is a really great place, especially in September. I would like to invite all of you to attend if you have the time, even to spend a little bit of time on the tour. What we're gonna be looking at is one of the restoration projects, the meadow restoration projects that I mentioned that are right along the highway. And then we're also gonna look at some of the restorations, things that have gone on up at Giant Forest, and we're gonna use those as a discussion point to talk about healthy forests and managing forests in a way that provide the kind of benefits that we all in this room think are important, clean air, clean water, and things like that. So we'll be discussing that at the board tour, which is the first day on Wednesday, and then the board meeting following up on Thursday. They're both half-day events. We have buses and things like that that we make sure that are there, so you don't have to drive. It's a good opportunity to network and discuss issues that are unique to your region or that transcend your unique area. Folks from Sierra Nevada Conservancy, other board members, other counties, and it's really nice time to discuss things besides getting out in the field and seeing some great stuff.
Did you say the tour's actually on the Wednesday?
Yes. It starts with a board tour on Wednesday, which is the afternoon, 1 to 5. Then there's a reception up at Wuxachi, and then we'll go ahead and have the board meeting the following day, and that starts 9:00 and ends at 2:00. And just since we're mentioning this, I wanna thank Wuxachi Lodge. They're putting up the board for a lower rate. Turns out they're pretty expensive at that point in time, and so state employees have to either bear the brunt or go somewhere else, and there's not a lot of lodging up there, so I wanna thank them. One of the things I'm doing for the Conservancy in this county is trying to work with local partners to develop some of these collaborative processes or figure out, hey, what are your issues, and can I go chase some funding somewhere else? Can I remove any roadblocks for you? Can I spend some of my time to help you out? That's what I'm doing 100% of my time right now. In addition to trying to finish out some of these Proposition 84 grants, we've got Mountain Home, we've got a number of others in the county. And I also, finally, I wanna just make an appeal that, you know, we do have some potential for water bonds in the future. We would like to be included in that so that we can represent the interests of the Sierra and continue to leverage the small amount of dollars to our region for these great projects that have tremendous benefit. And with that, I wanna ask if there are any questions, and thank you very much for your time this morning.
Any questions from board members? Sure. Supervisor Worthley?
Chairman, thank you. Bobby, thanks for being here today. I remember when the, this was created, and the Conservancy was fairly controversial because people were thinking of the coastal Conservancy and how that impacted land use, authority of local jurisdictions, and this is a great presentation, a demonstration of how I believe a Conservancy ought to be operating in terms of being kind of a helper to help local businesses, help private owners, private and public ownership of property.
Absolutely.
It's, in some respects, somewhat tragic that $85,000 is spent on NEPA compliance, SEQA compliance, as opposed to actually doing something physical. Unfortunately, that's the world we live in today. But appreciate your presentation and really very good information for us to have. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor.
Supervisor Ennis.
Yeah, Bobby, you know, I see that up at Tule and that, 'cause I have a place at Sequoia Crest, and I see how many people use it.
Right.
And educating them, like you guys are going, whatever you take down, you bring out.
Right.
You can just get people to do that and stop tearing the place up. I think that's very important, 'cause that's a very, very, you know, highly-used
Absolutely.
part of the river, so appreciate all your efforts there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Cox, do you have anything?
I'm glad you're taking care of the mountains I get to go up to and visit on a couple of weekends a year.
You're welcome.
You know, one thing I was gonna mention to you, Bobby, I don't know if you're familiar with the organization Tulare County Treasures. I just wanna make sure that you've made that connection because I know that they're working to do the same thing that you're kinda doing in terms of spreading awareness of sites of natural beauty that we have here in Tulare County.
Absolutely.
So that's a great partnership, and thank you for the presentation. It's pretty amazing when you actually can see some of the photos and learn about what we have here in Tulare County, because I'm not a mountain man like Supervisor Cox, and so I don't tend to go up there too often, but pretty amazing what we do have in terms of treasures here in Tulare County. So thank you very much for the presentation, and hopefully it won't be another five years before we hear from you again.
I'll be back. Thanks.
All right, thanks. All right. Next, we're gonna move on now to item number two on our agenda this morning, and that's public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on our agenda today. Public comments can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, and I will bring it back to the board. For Board of Supervisors matters, we'll start with Supervisor Worthley.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Well, this morning I made a, I don't usually take that route, but I wanted to today, drove up Road 80. It is now four lanes from Dinuba all the way up to the county line into the city limits, and they're doing some final striping. Once the signals have been activated, it will be ready to go. And I had a discussion, Matt is in my Rotary Club this morning, about having some kind of a ribbon-cutting, 'cause I think this is the biggest event, this is the biggest road project the county's ever undertaken tonight. You know, we always have groundbreaking ceremonies, but I think it might be good to have like a ribbon-cutting type ceremony for this particular project as well, because it is a major project for Tulare County. It's a great success story of Measure R, and it's just a beautiful project for you all to see. So I'd like for us maybe to see if we could schedule a time where we could get together and have a little publicity about, again, to support Measure R and our road projects and Tulare regional projects. This is a fabulous project. And then the southern portion of it in the city of Visalia, the Plaza Drive portion is moving along quite well. They appear to be, I think they will be finishing up this summer by the looks of things, that's moving along very well. This last Saturday, we had a grand opening in Orosee, a family dollar store. There are four of these stores just in my district that are either open or being open, one in Woodlake, one in Ivanhoe, one in Orosee, and one other in Dinuba. And so an opportunity for people to be able to buy things, they refer to it kind of like a CVS without a pharmacy. I mean, they really carry a little bit of everything, and quite a bit of food, and just the sort of the things that people will need to use. And in a community like Orosee, where a lot of people don't have vehicles to travel, the ability to buy these things and not have to worry about how they're gonna get to Dinuba or Visalia or someplace to a bigger place to buy, I think that'd be a great advantage for the community. So they are really aggressive in terms of their building and desire to expand, so very happy to see that going forward. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor, Supervisor Ennis, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, I'll be having another updated Gang Summit meeting at noon at Porterville Police Department. Next Tuesday, we won't have a board meeting, so I'll be attending the Porterville Unified School District's Back-to-School Kickoff Presentation, and they're bringing all the business people in, as well as the teachers and everybody. And Christopher Calbalden, the president of Link Learning, will be one of the keynote speakers, and J.D. Hoy, president of National Academy Foundation, will be another speaker. But bringing the business people in and showing the opportunities for students, how they can get their education tuned towards local jobs and how to make a, how to make a living locally and stay in our own area. So looking forward to that. Also, I'll be speaking to the engineers next Wednesday night in Porterville, so that's what I've got ahead of me so far.
All right, great. Supervisor Cox?
Uh, let's see. By the way, a report, we have, each of us here sits on the TCAG board, and the board created a mitigation banking committee, and we're moving forward with the RFP going through the city of Porterville, looking for a consultant to tell us, give us the 10,000-foot information about what items we might need to mitigate for around future Measure R projects. So that's underway. I believe the RFP was approved this week, so that'll be going out soon. Also, we are in the middle... so that'll be going out soon. Also, we are in the middle of working on the next challenge project. Remember, we work with junior high schools and high schools countywide to do service projects. The planning committee had its first meeting. We'll meet again this week and go over some ideas about how to make that project even bigger and better than it has been in the past. Every district's actually participated this last year, very successful program where we were able to have 19, I believe, service projects happening countywide. And so we hope to increase that this year. Next week, the step-up law enforcement enrollment will begin. Remember, we have 150 allocated positions for law enforcement agencies from throughout Tulare County. Last year, we had about 130 law enforcement officials participate in a one-day training event. This year, we have Dr. Gil Martin coming back, who will be doing a daytime and a nighttime session for couples. So we've increased that and made that a little bit larger. That was one of the requests from the folks that attended last year, was to have an event where they could bring their spouse to or their significant other. So we're gonna make that happen in October. Official enrollment starts next week. I'd like to put Allison Pierce on the spot. If you can start making your way this way. Give us a little report on our Summer Night Lights program up to date. We still have a week or two to go. I'm not gonna hold you to the numbers, but we do have some rough attendance numbers. And then if you would tell us a little bit about your Allensworth experience this last weekend.
Yes, Alpa and Allensworth held, oh, Allison Pierce, Board Representative. Alpa and Allensworth held their final Summer Night Lights event Saturday at Colonel Allensworth State Historic Park. The park service very generously offered the open service to their park for the whole day. And the event took place from 3:00 to 8:00, or 7:00. And 180 representatives or individuals from both Alpa and Allensworth attended, in coordination with a loop bus bringing over individuals, a little delayed, but they finally made it over to Allensworth. It was a success, considering last year's event, they had roughly 140 attend that event combined. So it's getting bigger each year. We're standing at a little over 10,000. We will go over the 11,000 mark by the time the Summer Night Lights program ends this summer. The sites that have remaining nights are Visalia and Rich Grove. Everyone else has completed their Summer Night Lights experience, pretty much. Visalia has one more event, and Rich Grove has two. With Rich Grove being the last on August 16th, they're combining it with a back-to-school dance. So it's been an exciting year. And Woodlake has done an amazing job. And I'm looking forward to giving the report, the final report in September, when we are actually in Woodlake for that evening board meeting. I think it's on September 10th. So that's just a teaser for ya.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison and Supervisor Cox. Appreciate it. The one thing that I wanted to go over today was a bit of information that we learned last week at our San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting. We were talking about preliminary renewal rates for our health insurance plans, which are near and dear to the hearts of every county employee and every employee that's a member entity is a part of the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. We found out that due to Affordable Care Act implementation, we will have an additional $2.3 million in fees that have to be paid for and factored into the renewal rates that our employees will be paying under the new Affordable Care Act system, which is implemented December 1st of, I'm sorry, January 1st of 2014. That $2.3 million is gonna be spread between Tulare County and Fresno County and the city of Tulare, Series, and I think a couple other smaller cities. But it just shows that, you know, we are in control of our own destiny, so to speak, in terms of health and wellness. The lower the claims levels and the better we take care of ourselves as individuals and trying to stay healthy, the more we can control our health rates, except for when you have something come down from the federal government that's supposed to be no cost to bring healthcare to everyone. That's gonna end up costing each and every one of our beneficiaries or employees who participates in the health plan a small amount of money, or a large, could be large in some cases. But we have to cover and compensate for that $2.3 million between our small counties. So that's kind of an eye-opener for me, and was a little bit of a shocker to the rest of the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority Governing Board last week that we learned about. And with that, that concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. We're now gonna move on. We're gonna entertain the consent calendar real quick, and then we'll get to our timed items. Item number 23 is going to be pulled off of the consent calendar. Is that for separate consideration or off completely?
Off.
Off completely. Alright, so item 23 is off completely. Any supervisors have any other items they'd like to pull for separate consideration? Members of the public, any items for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none. Chair'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of consent calendar list item.
Alright, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Ashida being absent on some sort of mountain fact-finding mission. So wish him well and hope that he's safe hiking up there and returns safely.
Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
Do we know when item 23 will be coming back to us?
13.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, that is the consent calendar. We will now move to our 9:30 timed items. Item number four is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to review and receive public comment on the annual grantee performance reports for grants number 09 STBG 6419 and 12 CDBG 8419 and the Program Income Revolving Loan Account. Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, CAO, County Council. This morning, the matter before you is a public hearing to consider a review of proposed annual grantee performance reports for two block grant programs, as well as the Program Income Revolving Loan Account. Attachment A is the technical report that is to be provided to the state. However, the agenda item tries to give you the detail in order to explain just exactly what has occurred during the last fiscal year, so that you can evaluate the effectiveness of the programs that have been carried out this fiscal year. Essentially, there are three parts to this presentation. Number one, we'll review with you the state block grant activities, which are two, the Veracruz apartment rehabilitation, as well as the Ivanhoe Water System Construction, the community development block grant activities, which included rehabilitation of the Nueva Sierra Vista Apartments, and a Food Link Equipment Activity. And then finally, the Program Income Revolving Loan Account, which contains $195,000 in terms of current balance. I can say that these grants are on time and within budget. Alright, turning now to the state block program. This was an $800,000 grant awarded in November '09. There were two activities. Number one, the Veracruz Village Rehabilitation. Approximately $400,000 of grant funds was expended towards this activity, and $230,000 of local funds was expended. Primarily, the activity involved the construction or installation of energy improvement, energy efficiency improvements. And they are enumerated in your report, but the bottom line is that they brought about a 25% reduction in energy usage as a result of this activity. Turning now to the Ivanhoe Water System, this was a closed-loop system to construct a new well for the Ivanhoe community. The primary activity that supported this project was the new Linda Vista apartment complex, which included 76 units. The grant expires 12/30/13, and everything seems to be wrapping up very well. Turning now to the second part, the CDBG activity, $1.1 million was awarded by the state in May of 2012. There are two activities here. One, rehabilitation along the same lines as the earlier grant, dealing with energy improvements in the amount of $925,000. And $100,000 was allocated to Food Link for equipment designed for food storage. The final part of the presentation deals with the Program Income Revolving Loan Account. The balance right now is $195,000. The purposes of the revolving loan account are primarily allocated to our housing programs, dealing with acquisition, disposition, clearance, demolition, and cleanup of contamination sites, as well as new construction. However, we are exploring the possibility that with regard to the balance, that perhaps this funding could be used for either public improvements or economic development programs. This would involve a waiver. We would have to present a request to the state in order to allocate these funds. But we would report to your board before we did that, because this would be a deviation from the primary purpose, which is housing programs. However, we do have a program in place whereby we can explore this opportunity this fiscal year. This is a public hearing. Public notice was duly advertised in the newspaper, both in English and Spanish. Finally, I would like to thank Lori Mercer and her staff for, number one, carrying out these activities and for assisting in the preparation of this report. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments from board members?
On that, the Nueva, I'm sorry, the one that we're yet to expend the funds on, about close to $900,000, I believe it was. How many units are involved in that?
The report doesn't say exactly. I can get that for you, but it would certainly have to be more than the
Well, that's what I was wondering. It would be about three times the amount of money, or two and a half times the amount of money. It looked like it was, the other affected about 48, 49 units. So I was just curious.
Right.
That's alright, thank you.
I'll subject a check.
You know, Mike, I did have a question. And, you know, I totally appreciate the economic development intent, that you had mentioned that we could possibly take the Program Income Revolving Loan Account and have it get a waiver from the state and use it for that purpose. But one of the things that I thought of when I was reading through this agenda was, I thought of the nuisance property abatement program that I was hoping to get started this year and really get going with, and helping to clean up our unincorporated communities throughout the county. And a lot of that does have, most of it actually has to do with housing and taking units throughout the county and making an example in taking these units and demolishing them and selling them or cleaning them up. Whatever we can do to help clean up our unincorporated communities in the county, I think there's a lot of need there. And this could be the small amount of seed money that could get this program going, so to speak. Working with Dennis Lehman and the Sheriff's Department and many other interested parties to see what we can come up with. I just saw this as being a potential funding source. Any thoughts or?
I think you're right on. When I reread this report coming up, I said, this could apply to the substandard abatement slash public nuisance program that is being contemplated by your board and RMA. So yes, there is that fertile opportunity to go in that direction. However, I just wanted to know, thinking outside the box, that if there was something that we needed in order to jumpstart fairly quickly in the econ dev area, this is a possibility as well.
Okay, yeah. They're definitely both very important, but I do think that, you know, we should definitely, even if we are gonna look at both potential avenues, we have about $200,000 to work with here. Maybe we put, you know, some towards one end and the rest of it towards the other end, because I think that both are mutually beneficial to the unincorporated parts of our county.
We will look into that. And we do have a report coming to your board on substandard abatement. We can certainly weave that into the presentation.
Okay, that'd be great.
Supervisor Worthley. Related to that, Mike, thanks. I was curious about that, too. I know we have done these abatements in the past, and then we've put a lien against the property when we do that. So I'd be kinda curious to have a financial report on how that's faring. Are we, we should be recovering those funds and being able to back, reinvest them back into more of the same kind of work in our
And that's really what I'm talking about, you know, to do sort of the large-scale program that I was hoping to get started this year would be, you know, the initial seed money to abate and clean up these properties that would then, we would either sell the property or be reimbursed by the property owner, because he wasn't willing to do it. And this could become a self-funding program that would help really clean up unincorporated areas throughout the county. Do you have a question, Mike?
Yeah, I just have a comment, too. To me, this would work out, hopefully, for things like the GT Woods Building in Terabella, getting rid of that eyesore and putting in, and that's what it is, believe me.
That's the whole kit and caboodle of our budget right there.
A lot of calls on that. But, you know, we thought about in the past of maybe getting it demolished and putting in small businesses with residents above and stuff that the community might be able to use. But anything we could do to disclean it. That's the focal point of that community, and it's just a big eyesore. It's a big boarded-up building, which used to be the main economic area for Terabella. So that's something.
Hey, don't try to take Trader Joe's away from Pixly, Mike.
That was my thought. I like the idea, though, even though I see the need for the economic development side, I like the idea of a partnership with the sheriff in identifying these vacant residences. And there are many of them. I've been out on several ride-alongs with the sheriff, and that's late at night, that's where you go to find out, you know, who's been doing something bad. And it's a huge problem out in our unincorporated communities. And some of these houses are so small, they're not multi-thousand-dollar cleanup projects. There are few thousand-dollar cleanup projects. But we have, I'm not gonna say which community I was in last, but in the last community I was in on a ride-along, we went to three vacant residences that you could probably fit in the well here, that were very heavily graffiti. There were folks hanging out in there doing bad things. So I'd really like to see a partnership where we could streamline this, have the sheriffs make a recommendation. Here's the residences that we know of that need to be cleaned up, and they need to be cleaned up right now. I think that'll go a long way to clean up our communities and help out with some of the crime that we're having in these smaller communities. So very supportive of that idea.
Great.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. Really appreciate this, because we threw the idea out there, but your feedback is very helpful. Now we know where to prioritize and come back to you as to how to propose the allocation of these funds. Very well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment related to this item. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the board for action.
Chair, a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Supervisor Cox, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously four to zero with Supervisor Ashida not being present to vote. Thank you. That concludes item number four. We will now move on to item number five, which is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to continue the public hearing from June 4th, 2013, for the adoption of the building permit fee adjustment for general plan maintenance. Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Chairman and board members. Roger Hunt, Assistant RMA Director in Charge of Administration. And this is a continuance of a public hearing to consider a fee adjustment for the general plan maintenance fee. As indicated in the staff report, the first was brought to your board in April, then continued to June, and then finally to today. And through that process, the staff had originally recommended increasing the flat fee of $125 to $250, because the $125 was only collecting about $50,000, which is money that would be to defer the cost of the preparing the general plan and actually go toward the cost of implementation of the general plan. To give you a little background, over the last 10 years, there's been over $3.6 million spent in doing the general plan update. We had a separate budget unit in which we were tracking that cost, and we were having to get help from the CAO's office, basically out of the property taxes, to pay for that preparation. And we've also identified in this coming year's budget, the implementation of the general plan, in which we've identified, I believe, up to $380,000 just for this year's level of effort. And the implementation will take more than one year, certainly. Having said that, the Fee Authority, Government Code Section 66-014B, gives local agencies the authority to recover costs associated with preparing plans and policies. And certainly, the general plan is one such plan. Without the general plan, local land use entitlements would not be possible. And so it's the general plan, also the resulting community plans and zoning ordinances and things that come out of the general plan that need to be adopted in order to approve building permits and other land use applications. The current fee of $125 is applied to only a small percentage of the total building permits. Last year, we had about 3,000 building permits, and only 401 had this general plan maintenance fee surcharge, if you want to call it, added on. And it's applied to construction for new buildings, for mobile home installations and relocations of buildings. relocations of buildings. And for those things, there's 1,000 square feet and more. So as I said, it's about 14% out of that 3,000 building permits. Also, other counties and as well as three of the cities in Tulare County are charging fees to recover their costs associated with the general plan that they have. And I've given you in the staff report, more of them, but on the screen here, I've identified our, our neighboring counties and also the three cities to give you a feel for that and as well for the, the audience.
Excuse me, Roger. I'm just curious, you, you've listed some of those counties. Am I to assume that other counties that are not listed, such as our immediate neighbors of Kern, Kings and Fresno, do they not charge?
Fresno does not. Neither does Kings. We, we went through and in the staff report, I identified all that we were able to identify that are collecting a fee. Most of them were along the coastline or down south, you know, like there's Ventura County, Monterey County, Napa, to give you examples. And there's a variety of ways in which they charge. Some do a flat fee, some by square footage, some by a percentage, some based upon a, a fee based on valuation. So we looked at all of those and, and talking with the housing and building, building and housing manager, Dennis Lehman, his recommendation was to apply to the square footage. It's, it's certainly something that staff can verify as opposed to valuation and it's, it's, school fees are applied based on square footage. And so it is a, a normal mechanism used for applying fees. I did, in this slide, want to provide you with some statistics, you know, just to kind of give you a feel for the, the 401. I did want to point out the solar in particular because solar really didn't have any square footage and the solar projects are unique. We had 11 solar projects, but we're not looking at very many of those in the future. It's, it's so, I really would want to consider the other residential, commercial, ag commercial. And if we received any solar projects, a, a minimum fee, it certainly should be applied, but there's no way to apply on a square footage for solar. So I was concentrating more on the other three. And you can see that residential makes up the biggest share. It is 70% of those 401 and commercial is 16% and ag commercial 12%. And you can see the, over to the right, I had the average building permit fee by square foot. So you can see that for those residential building permits, it was 53 cents a square foot and it drops down to 17 for commercial and down to 4 cents for ag. And so you do see in things like ag commercial where you got, in terms of the building permit fee, the square footage that is involved in the project is rather large, therefore the low cost per square foot. Overall, 31 cents. And also identified what the average building permit fee was for those 401 to give you a feel for that.
Roger, that does not include in the school impact fees? That's just our county, that's what we charge?
That's our building permit fee, yes. Just by way of note, if you imply, applying the $125 general plan maintenance fee to the residential, it actually worked out to 7.2 cents a square foot when I take the almost $35,000 that was collected at $125 each for the 279 residential. So very close to the eight cents that we're recommending on this square footage fee. The commercial was much less, a, a one and a half cent and ag commercial 1.8 cents. So there is quite a difference there. And overall, it was 3.8 cents. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that the, the fee helps defray the cost. And obviously, right now, in order to amortize the 3.6 million over 20 years, it would be $180,000. We collected $50,000 this last year. So we're doing maybe 30% of, of what the total cost is. And we did check with some of the other counties and their fees do not necessarily recover all the costs. And certainly, there was some discussion at one of our prior meetings about how should we put this burden on, on all the people in the unincorporated area when the general plan actually services the whole county. And certainly, right now, property taxes are paying for the bulk of the cost for not only the preparing the plan but implementation. And right now, we were just using the cost of preparing the plan as the, for the methodology arriving at the rate. Certainly, your board could consider a, a lesser rate or lesser recovery than 100%. As I said, right now, it's about 30% of, of the amortized cost of preparing the plan, not including implementation. And then looking at, the staff report attachments actually had a lot of information. So I put the different scenarios on separate pages here just so they could separate them out and maybe be a little bit clearer. Certainly trying to put all that information on one page would have been too much. See that, as an example, on ag commercial, it'd be 182% of what the building permit fee is and you may consider that to be excessive. This would be at eight cents a square foot with no minimum, no maximum. That would generate, when we get to where we're doing 5,000 building permits a year as opposed to the 3,000 we're doing now, it would generate around $180,000 full recovery. To set, we felt that it was reasonable to set a minimum $80 based upon 1,000 square feet at eight cents a square foot and $1,000 maximum is one, one option. And you could see that for things like residential, it's 15% of the building permit fee, whereas ag commercial, still 145%, still may be considered excessive. Also identified the number of permits under those scenarios that would have a minimum fee and a maximum fee. So you get a feel for the fact that right now, people are paying $125. If they're paying a minimum fee of $80, they're getting a $45 reduction in the fee. If they're paying 200 or $1,000, obviously, that's a, a big jump from 125. And you could see the commercial and ag commercial would be the ones most affected by that, that maximum. Whereas the residential side would be the ones most affected by the minimum. Here's a scenario at $500. You can see that the, the minimum fees wouldn't change or the numbers. Again, ag commercial, you're looking 105% of the building permit fee and 15% on residential. And finally, the $250 maximum, which is where staff, we ended up in recommending, even though it's not going to recover the $180,000 once we get to 5,000 building permits, be much closer to a half of the, of the amount, around, around $100,000. You can see though, that the ag commercial drops down to 68%. The, the number, total number of permits with, at the minimum and the maximum is 69 and 77 out of the 401. We felt that that was a reasonable compromise. Certainly, there are other options that we could entertain. Really, it's a matter of how much of the cost does your board want to recover through And I did want to point out that the, of the 401 building permits, which are only 14% of the 3,000 total, in terms of valuation, they added up to almost $93 million and the total valuation for all 3,000 building permits was 133 million. So the 14% represented almost 70% of the valuation, improvement valuation. So it's really kind of a meat of the building permits, which it should be. With that presentation, I will entertain any questions.
I, I do have a question for you, Roger, real quick. Would you just give members of the public an idea as to what costs or go into the general plan in general? I mean, we talked about the 3.6 million or whatever the dollar amount was that was mentioned. How much of that is legal expenses? How much of it is the actual document preparation, et cetera, et cetera? Just a rough, brief breakdown, if possible?
Best I can do here is I can tell you in terms of the contracted services, which includes special studies as well as legal services, was $2.4 million out of that 3.6. Staff time related to it was around a million dollars. And then there was the incidentals of different things like print and mail and copy and those kinds of costs, but that really makes up the, the bulk of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have questions?
Well, Supervisor Wardley. Just a comment. I, I know we have a public hearing on this matter. I don't have a problem with the fact that we're recovering about 30% from current charges. And my, and my thinking is that when I look at this general plan, I, I just don't, I don't in good conscience see putting all the burden on construction and development. First off, we want to encourage construction development. This is a discourage because of another cost. And we can say, well, it's not a lot of money, but it's all that incrementalism because it's, this goes up and another part of our building plant or costs go up and school impact fees go up. And when you add all these little incremental costs, we, we adopt new building code requirements that always increase the cost of construction. Now we have to fire, sprinkle all residential homes. And so all these things add to the cost of, of projects. And when I look at, at the general plan, it does so much more than just, yes, you have to have a general plan in order to get your building permit, but it does a whole lot more than just provide data for a building permit. And how much of the costs are borne by, are, are created by cities who, in this case, have, you know, litigated the, the general plan and created all the costs that were associated with that, but they're not going to be contributing to the cost of this because it's coming out, we're trying to get it out of the building impact fees, building fees. I, I really think it should come out of property tax. As you build buildings, you increase your assessed valuations, you increase your property tax, and that's another way of recovering money to, to pay for general plans. That would occur in the cities as well as outside the cities because we get property tax from both. So I, I, I'm really not, I'm not an advocate for, I appreciate the effort that you've made and your departments made to try to recover more. We always, I know our CIOs, that's a big thing on, on our agenda, always is try to recover our cost. But the general plan is a different kind of an animal to me. It's not like I go in to get a building permit and obviously, what I'm asking for you is something specific to my particular project and so I should be expected to pay for it. The general plan benefits every citizen of Tulare County and not just the people who are building a house or building a building. And so I, I, I really struggle with the idea of doing more than we are. I noticed that we look back and we've increased it from $10 when it was first initiated and it's been going up kind of semi-regularly and we're now at $125 as of, as of 2009. And maybe a slight increase based upon additional cost to that, to raise it somewhat would be appropriate because as everything goes up, that would be appropriate to do that. But to try to go back and get a larger portion of the general plan cost from develop, business development and, and the home construction and so forth, I really struggle with that personally.
Okay, Supervisor Ennis?
I would have to agree with my colleague on that because the more permits we put out there, tax base goes up, we get more money back. And so I just don't want to discourage people from coming to Tulare County and want to do their projects. And, you know, I, I could, I could go for a little bit of an increase, like we say over the years we've done, but I can't go for a big increase on this. I'm sorry.
Supervisor Cox?
Question I have for you, Roger. Did you say right now, our current fee produces about a 30% recapture?
Yes. About, last year was $50,000.
You know, I, well, I would kind of concur because if we look at the unincorporated population versus the overall population of the county, which is about a third. So we're actually capturing about a third now of the cost of the general plan, which covers about a third of the citizens in the entire county. So I'm not uncomfortable with the rate at which we're recapturing that general plan cost either. So I think it's a philosophy that we need to adopt, you know, do we look at the overall county? Or are we going to place the burden, as Supervisor Wardley said, just on those that are choosing to build and develop in the unincorporated area? So for, for me, I'm also fine with the, you know, the, the third of the capture because that's the number of citizens we have in the unincorporated area. So for me, philosophy-wise, that's where I think I would be as well. I could support a, an increase or some type of a, a, a moving around of the fees. I like what you've done here with giving us the options. Options are wonderful. But I think we, maybe we could, you know, tweak them a little bit more, but I don't think we need to go much beyond the, the, the third, you know, the third of the capture because that's how many citizens we have in the unincorporated area.
One of the points I wanted to make was that, you know, certainly your board would give direction in terms of how much to recover, but I, staff's recommendation is to get away from the flat fee because you're charging the person with a 21,000 square foot home the same as you are for a 1,000 square foot addition. And we believe that the square footage would be the way to, to do that. One of the things that I was considering this morning, it seems like these thoughts always come today that you're going to have the meeting, was that when you look at the $125 and what it translates to now, that maybe an application, a translation to a square footage, and it was seven two, 7.2 cents on the residential, you know, eight cents is very close to that, you could settle on seven cents. And then the commercial and the ag commercial, drop those down to something lower. I was thinking eight, eight cents on residential, four cents on commercial, two cents on ag commercial. That way, it wasn't a burden in comparison for those other two fee types. And the amount of money that you would generate would be slightly more, you know, I'm looking at somewhere around instead of 50,000, maybe 54,000.
I, I, I support that. I, I think that, I don't have a problem with that at all going forward, Mr. Chairman. I think that would be a good approach. You probably would want to come, I don't know if we could adopt that today or whether you would want to come back and bring that. I know we have a public hearing on this matter too. But I, I think that we've, I, I think a sense, consensus I hear is that we're, we're agreeable to sort of the recovery amount that we're getting now and it, and I have no problem with adopting it to square footage. I think that's even more fair. Again, people building smaller homes don't get burdened with the cost of those building a larger home. So I, I, I support that. I just, it, it would be basically the same kind of a net, if you will, with a, a different way of calculation.
Right. All right. No further questions from the board. I will open up the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, Bob Keenan, President and CEO of the Home Builders Association, Tulare and Kings Counties. My address is PO Box 3930 in Visalia. I live on Beet Street, I guess. I'm here because I'd like to thank you for giving my, my, my talk because you pretty much covered all my bases and I'm sitting there checking them off. The full recovery of the general plan cost is really unfair to put on any development on the basis that they've used the existing one, but they're going to pay for their competitor under the next 20 years down the road. And it's a public good, it's a public benefit and the general plan is required by state law. And to shift the responsibility for paying for that from the general tax base to a segment of the taxpayers just seems totally unfair. I also have a question regarding legal expenses, if you could answer. Does that include defending it?
No, at this point.
Well, it can't. I just was hoping you'd say no. I know there's a lot of legal work that goes into making the general plan comply with state law and a lot of other things that are legal. I totally agree with your three members' position. We support it and I'd like to thank you for giving me almost nine minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for action and comments.
I guess this will be a question for Roger and counsel. I, I think we like the idea of the eight, four and two, but I'm looking at eight, four and two with a cap of $200 as a maximum. Are we able to set those limits today, even though it's not recommended?
That's what the purpose of this hearing is for.
That would be my motion then to set the fees at eight cents residential, four cents commercial, two cents ag commercial with a cap of $200.
And I just want to clarify for the record that I too am supportive of making sure that we do not place the burden on those who are wishing to build and, and add value to our county when we only account for 30% of the population. So I definitely agree with my colleagues and apparently I should have said so because I'm, I wasn't one of the three that was mentioned, so I just want to make sure my, my position is clear. I let my upper, my colleagues speak and I just didn't want to reiterate or beat a dead horse because it was already spoken for me. So I do have a motion from.
There's a second. I'm sorry. We do have a question from Roger. We had a minimum.
Oh, a minimum?
We had recommended a minimum. We had recommended a minimum of $80.
I amend my motion to be 8 cents residential, 4 cents commercial, 2 cents ag commercial, minimum $80 and a maximum of $200.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Cox, a second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero unanimously with Supervisor Ashida not present to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roger. All right. That concludes our public hearings this morning. We will now move on to the one untimed item on our agenda. That is item number 24. It's a request from the probation department to ratify and authorize the submission of an application to the Board of State and Community Corrections for grant funding. Chief Meyer?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Bales-Lang. Kristi Meyer, Chief Probation Officer. We really found ourselves in a wonderful position with respect to applying for these monies. We had spent the last eight months following the throes of AB 109, you know, prison realignment, really taking the opportunity to look at what is happening within our juvenile services division. What we found was while we're structurally sound, we do utilize a risk and needs assessment for, to base service delivery on. We have manageable caseload sizes. But what we did not have was adequate programming, okay, to meet the individual or group needs of minors. We realized that this is not going to come, or service providers are not going to come knocking on our door. So in the areas of substance abuse, in the areas of anger management, in the areas of parenting skills and/or gang interventions, if we want these kinds of programs, we are simply going to have to find them ourselves and teach them ourselves. So rather than depend on people that really aren't out there to meet our needs, we are going to want to be in a position to meet our own needs. So we developed a roadmap and when this grant application became available, we realized it will meet every one of our needs and allow us to parlay existing monies that we actually do have available to enhance the basics that this will provide. It's interesting with our risk and needs assessment that, yes, we can identify an individual's risk and needs, but we cannot do a composite. And the existing provider has no ability to provide us with that. So we recently went in and actually hand-pulled the three major criminogenic needs on all of our institutional clients, okay, everyone who's in the youth facility and the juvenile detention facility. It took probably 40 hours of staff time in each of those facilities to end up with a composite of what they look like. Because we're really committed to developing program, not based on what we think they need, but actually what a validated assessment tells us that they need. With the purchase of the new risk and needs assessment, we will, that has the ability to provide all kinds of composite reports, that will really be of great benefit to us. We're also looking at a, what they call the Phoenix Curriculum, which is, while relatively expensive, it's workbook-based and is extremely flexible. So that when the needs of your, of our juvenile population change, we are able to adjust accordingly and not, again, wait for someone to come out and provide the services for us. So, we were going to do these things anyway. These funds will actually speed up that process and really give us the ability to get a jump start on things. So, exciting for us.
Any comments from board members? Supervisor Cox?
I don't see a request for increased staff. Are you going to add any staff, any teacher? Are you going to use your existing staff?
We're going to train our existing staff to be trainers and to be, to provide the interventions needed. It'll also allow us a continuum of service delivery, either from the field into the institutions or from the institutions back into the field, so that it can flow both ways. There will be no need for additional staff.
Any additional questions or comments? Supervisor Worthley?
A comment, Mr. Chairman. Kristi, I really appreciate your approach, which is, you know, I mean, oftentimes, I think there's an attitude, if there's a grant, go for it. You know, it's free money sometimes. Usually, it's not. But that idea of actually having a plan and then looking for a grant that fits within an existing plan and framework, to me, is an ideal way of approaching it and I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was just going to make the comment that I just appreciate you thinking outside the box and, you know, in the probation industry, so to speak, we are dealing with the youth, primarily what you were talking about with this item. And I think that this is really important to be able to have the flexibility and to be innovative so that we can help to put these youth maybe back on the right track in life or give them the tools that they need to acclimate into the real world and to move forward from their setback that they've obviously encountered when they're institutionalized. So I think you're doing a great job and I appreciate all that the probation department has done for the county.
Thank you. Just as a side note, we're in the process of purchasing an interest and aptitude test, which will be administered to primarily or initially all of our in custody minors. All of our kids tend to lose huge pieces of their education. And therefore, we're going in and assessing them for their interest as well as their aptitude. Not only does that assist them hopefully in providing some avenue of study or training, but it will also provide the basis for us in the institutions to provide vocational training, okay, based upon the aptitude. You know, not everyone's going to be, needs to be a landscaper or a, you know, small appliance repair person, but really to look at those clusters and then develop vocational education and/or training as well as electives within the school program at the institution. So we're very excited about that. And that should be up and running on or before September 1st, so.
That's great. Another great thing, so thank you very much, Chief. Any further questions or comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Who approves, Mr. Chairman?
A motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Ashida not present. That concludes the open session agenda of today's meeting. Counsel, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Item A on your board's closed session agenda and addenda are off. Addenda, excuse me, I just lost what I was looking at. There we go. And you have remaining on your closed session agenda and addenda, addendum, items B through F. I do anticipate there will be an announcement.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for attending today's board meeting and we will see you in two weeks. We are dark next week. Thank you.
This is Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, reporting at a closed session on item H, to consider the public employee appointment, employment for the position of interim human resources director. On a motion by Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Cox, the board voted unanimously with Supervisor Ashida absent to appoint Rhonda Shustrom as the interim human resources officer.